We'll call our meeting to order. This is the Santa Barbara City Council. Today's June 11, 2019. We'll do our pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Madam Clerk?
Certainly. Councilmember Dominguez?
Here.
Councilmember Rose?
Here.
Councilmember Sten?
Here.
Mayor Potem Freeman?
Here.
Councilmember Harmon?
Here.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Here.
And Mayor Maria?
Here.
We have a ceremonial item. Ms. Clerk, will you read that for us?
Yes. Item one, Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, June 2019.
The Alzheimer's folks here, come on up.
So is it Lee Cashman and Caitlin Reeves?
Welcome.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation that Alzheimer's Brain and Awareness Month is June 2019. Whereas Alzheimer's disease, a progressive neurodegenerative brain disorder tragically robs individuals of their memories and leads to progressive mental and physical impairments; and whereas Alzheimer's disease is the sixth leading cause of death in the United States and the second leading cause of death in California and the only cause of death in the top ten that has no cure, no treatment, and no way to slow its progression; and whereas more than 5.8 million people nationwide live with Alzheimer's, including 670,000 in California and more than 10,000 in Santa Barbara County; and whereas more than 1.6 million dedicated caregivers in California provide unpaid home care valued at more than $23 billion; and whereas, according to the National Institute on Aging, Alzheimer's indirectly costs businesses up to $37 billion a year nationwide in lost productivity due to employees who miss work or leave their jobs to provide care for loved ones; and whereas with early detection and diagnosis, individuals and their families can gain access to treatment medications, enroll in critical research trials, fully plan for the future, and receive support from the Alzheimer's Association; and whereas the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the need to raise awareness of Alzheimer's disease and honor caregivers who aid those with Alzheimer's. Now therefore I, Mayor Kathy Maria, do hereby proclaim June 2019 as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month in Santa Barbara and encourage community members to honor local families affected by Alzheimer's disease. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is for you. How was --
Say a few words.
Okay. Sorry, I'll have my back to you. Thank you very much for this. As you heard, it is a very devastating disease, the only disease in the top ten that has no prevention, no pill, no protocol. It is the number six killer in the country. But what's really exciting is the research and what's coming out now. And we are working very closely with our Assembly member, Monique Lamone, and Senator Hannah Beth Jackson at the state level. We were just named Nonprofit of the Year, the Central Coast Chapter of Alzheimer's. We went up to Sacramento and received that award, and it gives Alzheimer's great awareness. We're working on a bill with both Senator Jackson and also with Assembly member Lamone, and it just went through. We got half of what we were asking for, which is huge, more than we ever have. So when you see our Assembly member and you see our senator, please thank them for all the hard work that they're doing on this disease. We need to figure this out. It is the number two killer in California and the number one killer of women in California. So we're fighting hard. I'm a volunteer, and I thank you very much for this. And I think that's it. Thank you all.
Thank you so much for your good work.
Can we take a photo?
I'm sorry. Oh, yes, please.
And please don't hesitate to call the Alzheimer's Association if you're dealing with this right now.
Do you have someone who would be an art photographer?
There he is, right there. Can do that. Thank you.
One, two, three. Here.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
That closes the ceremonial items. Mr. Casey, are there any changes to the agenda?
No, Madam Mayor.
Very good. We go to public comment. This is the part of the meeting where we get to hear from the public on items that are not on our official agenda. And Holly Pareja is in the back, recently engaged to be married. And Holly, you can congratulate her. And you can make an appointment with us. We're not as exciting. If you have issues. And also she can get you answers from staff. We can't really engage in a dialogue up here because of the Brown Act, but we want to hear what you have to say. Monica Ramirez, you're first. Everyone has three minutes up here at the microphone. There's a timer right there. Please pay attention. Scott Wentz, after you. There he is in the back. Carol Bremis, I hope I'm saying your name right, and Mary Lewis, after her. Go ahead, Ms. Ramirez.
Once again, I'd like to have the city of Santa Barbara recognize me and acknowledge me as a true, masculine, Native American Dutchman. I don't appreciate being segregated and discriminated against. I have been all over Santa Barbara to get assistance, and I am tired of this. My son has been legally kidnapped by the Howards. They have had numerous court orders, and they keep violating them. The city of Santa Barbara is not adhering to the law. I am crying out there on the streets, homeless on powers, asking for the law and order. I have a protective order in 2012. This man violated it. He broke in my apartment, attempted to kill my 16-year-old son, okay? And then he saw Judge Hill. Judge Hill put a 10-year protective order. And because my son's name is not on here, they're saying it doesn't -- it's not effective. I want to know what's going on. I'm not the only one out there on the streets that have -- are victims of the Witness Protection Program. Joyce Dudley is taking us victims and putting us out there on the street, displacing us, putting our children on drugs. We need help. I haven't seen my son for two years, and I have a visitation order from Judge Dodona. This family and Joyce Dudley is saying F you to the judges. Judge Herman, 2012. Judge Hill, 2015. Judge Dodona, 2017. I want to know why I'm not able to get the welfare check of my son. I haven't seen him in two years. I am requesting time and time again that the city council get out of their office, take the shades off their eyes, and start paying attention. You know how many times Deborah Hammer has said that she would meet me on Powers and Carpenteria Avenue where I am located and the police are stalking me and they're saying, "If I see you again, I'm going to give you a warrant." You have a warrant, okay? I'm sick and tired of this. I have been disabled for 17 years. They kidnapped my child. I didn't get proper representation, and then I just get a copy of the minute order. I'm a graduate of legal justice administration. I worked for the Superior Court. I worked under Judge Honorable Schirmer, Scott Schirmer, Scott Samuel Schirmer. I worked under Paul Caprito. I want to know what's going on. I am a legal justice administrator. I'm going to jail. I have never been to jail in my life. After 48 years, I don't have a mother, I don't have a father, I don't have a sister, I don't have a single child. I have had six children. Why does this family get to say fuck you to the judges? You know, you guys say fuck you to the judge?
Ms. Ramirez.
That's not right. I am so pissed off. I love my children, and I want them found.
Thank you.
All six of them.
Mr. Wentz, it's your turn.
Law and order be enforced. Bring up the martial law flag. I want accountability.
Thank you, Mr. Wentz.
Scott Wentz, representing Cars Are Basic. This organization is always stood by honesty and truth, and so when we make a mistake, we own up to it. Councilmember Gutierrez, we made a mistake. We apologize for that, and it won't happen again. Councilwoman Sten, your comment last week on the issue of Puesa del Sol and the accident, looked into the accident report. The crossing guard was -- the crossing guard was hit in the traffic lane, which a bulb out would not have solved. Now, the issue again on bulb outs is you do not have any statistical evidence after a decade to prove it. Glatte doesn't have it, Carpenteria doesn't have it, the county doesn't have it, SB CAG doesn't have it. So why would you continue to do what you can't prove? Each one of those corners is a minimum of $45,000. You can buy a flashing crosswalk for $8,000 plus, not plus, including tax, delivered to the city of Santa Barbara. I checked on that. So you have a problem there, I would ask that you would rescind that vote on that issue. Mr. Friedman, made up a -- I made a comment having to do with the issue on Caesita and La Combra. I said the majority of the accidents up here happened to be because of drunk driving. Obviously, you were not aware of the fact that the city of Santa Barbara had already made a determination with George Girth and the city police department that where you have issues of drunk driving and so forth, that the city would not put bulb outs there. You made the comment about you wanted to have your children safe. I understand it. Very, very honorable. Your children would not be safe at that intersection with a bulb out. Again, with flashing crosswalk there, which the city has plans for, you can do that. So if you have two intersections, $45,000 per corner, how many flashing crosswalks can you put in on the north side of Santa Barbara? Very simply, you can put in 16. You would add exponentially to the safety of pedestrians without having this problem. Now, the last time I was here also, and I understand this, Madam Mayor, I don't take offense at it, you took kind of a backhand slap at me when you made the comment to Rob Dayton, saying, "I don't believe that you're a liar." Here's the issue with Mr. Dayton. He was in the back anteroom. He heard every comment that I had to make about him. So when he said to you, "I don't know what you're talking about," it's endemic in his nature. He can't tell the truth. You were lied to by a city employee when you made that comment, and he responded to you. He can't help himself. So I would appreciate if you would review these votes on the bulb outs, rescind them, and stop putting them in. They don't work.
Ms. Bremis, it's your turn. You have visuals for us?
We do.
Very good.
It's too fast.
That's fine. I haven't started the timer, so I'll let you get set up.
Okay.
Okay.
Good afternoon. I'm Carol Bremis, and I'm here to introduce you to a model for homeless housing. It's called the POD, and it would be inside a centrally located vacant building in Santa Barbara. The POD features communal living and dining areas and access to a big screen TV or two, plus social spaces. Sleeping rooms would have shh signs on the doors. That means no talking. And whispering only in sleeping rooms. And they would be well insulated. Excuse me a second. This is the last slide, not that it doesn't belong here. We just have to leave it? Okay. Well, let me just say, these aren't in order. And I don't know which will come up next, if anything. Let me pray for a moment. Okay. Sleeping rooms would have a shh sign, and somebody's checking out for me. No talking. And they'd be well insulated. And below the beds, there would be locked storage. I'm so sorry you can't see this. I'm sorry. Sleeping rooms contain built-in double-decker beds with pull-down screens for privacy, a drop-down shelf for reading, writing, and computers. Also, a power socket and a personal reading light. Residents would have key cards. I'll try and be the visual. They would allow you access to the building. They would allow you access to your sleeping pod, and also access to the under-bed storage that would unlock it. Bathrooms have common grooming spaces. That would be the sinks and the mirrors are shared. Otherwise, there's little doors for toilet and shower rooms. Those are not shared. They're locking. And they would be provided with towels, soap, and shampoo. There'd be free laundry available to everyone. Right now, you'd be looking at washer and dryers. The POD would provide support services. You'll hear about that in a minute. And employment and training opportunities. In the beginning, residents could work off their rent by cleaning and cooking at the POD. A similar situation to this exists in a historic hotel in Oakland, and has resulted in 80% of its residents moving into permanent residency, permanent housing, in less than one year. 80% less than one year.
Your time is up, sorry. But is Ms. Lewis going to come up and talk more about this proposal? Okay.
Just let them keep running.
Whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Mary Lewis.
Stay close to the microphone right there.
I'm a local marriage and family therapist, and my experience includes helping folks suffering from mental illness and/or homelessness. While a vocational rehabilitation specialist, I conducted job skills groups guiding clients through the process of employment readiness, including self-care, grooming, anxiety and symptom management, and practice interviews. I also provided ongoing on-the-job coaching and support. In Santa Barbara, I have volunteered at various times with Common Ground and Organic Soup Kitchen and as a team leader for the 2015 point in time count. Of vital importance to the POD project is the establishment and maintenance of a safe and healthy community where individuals can heal and grow, while addressing their particular challenges and enjoying mutual support and encouragement. I recommend the book Restoring Sanctuary by Sandra Bloom and Brian Faraher, who describe a trauma-informed system to build an organizational culture of psychological healing. Another useful resource is the work of Delancey Street, started in San Francisco in 1971, the country's leading residential self-help organization for former substance users, ex-convicts, homeless, and others who have hit bottom. Services I could provide might include admission interviews to determine the appropriateness of the program for each applicant, as well as setting goals for the stay; ongoing groups related to symptom management and community building; group and individual support for the adjustment to community living, and preparation for return to living in the community at large. Many of the homeless have become unused to what others might take for granted, such as seeking and maintaining housing, shopping for food and clothing, et cetera; job readiness groups; role-play interview rehearsals; conflict resolution; job coaching, including for in-house jobs; arts, nature, and gardening experiences to enhance capacity for healing, self-soothing, and community engagement; referral to outside resources as needed; also staff coaching, guidance, and support. I am delighted to offer my consultation and support where appropriate for this worthy project. Thank you, Carol. Thank you for your vision and for your caring heart, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Brad Smith, you're next.
Madam Mayor.
Doug Giordani. Oh, Mr. Dominguez, you have a question?
Could I ask the speakers to please make an appointment with Holly in the back? I'd like to meet with you on this. I've done some work with Delance, and I've been trying to get them down here. I think there's several places on Milpus that would be perfect, so I'd love to meet with you all.
Very good. Mr. Smith?
Thank you. Mayor Maria, council, staff, community members. I'm here to support my friend Carol. I think she's got a good idea that could be a nice stepping stone and piece of the solution to our homeless housing and services situation. Some of the things I like about it, it could be low cost, so we could serve a lot more people. Low cost, but without the kind of barracks look of some of the things I've seen out there. Her idea is intended to show dignity and that we care about these people. And so the dignified environment is important, shows them their value. And this could be a stepping stone to integrate our homeless population into a healthy, mutually supportive community, which is what all of us need. In particular, I actually, I would just say that I believe that that's the underlying solution to our problem, is that everybody, including our homeless people, need a healthy, supportive community. My particular background is Youth Drought Project, as some of you know, and I could imagine some vocational support for our homeless people in this kind of program, which would help them develop their -- redevelop their self-respect again, build their social skills and their teamwork, and especially if they can work outdoors in nature with the soil and plants, that's very healing. So I think that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Great. Mr. Giordani, come on up. You'll be followed by Phil Walker, Anna Marie Gott, Gene Michaels, and Kenneth Locke will be our final speaker, and I won't take any more slips just during this section. Go ahead.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for what I've observed, just encountered with you a couple of times, is your friendliness, gregariousness, and openness to people, and I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. A chain is only as good as its weakest link. I've done tree work in past times. As I get older, it gets harder and harder to do. But if there's a fray and one section of the rope, the whole thing can fall apart and fall to the ground. And I think a culture is only as good as its weakest link and our attitude towards it. It reflects the heart and essence of who we are, and I think we need to open our hearts to the reality that there's people out there, whether of their own accord or not, that are in need of great help. And we're proposing something that could integrate a number of people and bring their self-esteem and their sense of value up, but we'd have to work together on something like this to create an environment that could accommodate a lot of these people. So I'm a chaplain in the jail, and I go in there a couple of times, two, three, four times a month, and I'm just, I'm touched and amazed at what some of these people have gone through. And a lot of them that are in there are homeless people that actually, on purpose, get put in jail so they have a place to stay. So that's kind of sad, but it touches my heart that we have this condition. So we need to work with the homeless people to bring them up, and it seems like we need something more comprehensive, like a project that would integrate a number of homeless together with helpers and social workers. And I just would like to encourage all of us to open our hearts to be able to help this problem to diminish. I want to thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much. Mr. Walker?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. It touched my heart, the lady who had the presentation of National Alzheimer's Day and Brain Awareness, too. You know, it's touched myself and my family. My wife's sister passed away two days before Christmas this past year with Alzheimer's. But she had the, I can't remember the name, but she, they lived in Phoenix, and it was, oh, you do not want to get it. And I'm a very fortunate man, surviving a near fatal CVA cardiovascular accident, a subcortical brain hemorrhage at El Estero, May 19, 2009. And you know, Cottage Hospital does have a Class 1 stroke center there, and they are good. So time is of the essence. One other quick thing, they've, in the last couple, about three or four weeks, there's been a series of seismic tremors in the Fontana area. And when I went down to visit family members in the inland empire, I happened to stay May 19th, let's see, that was May 19th, no, excuse me, 1992, June 28th and 29th. On the overnight, I left here at El Estero, 12:00 midnight, got down to the Ontario Airport. I was just too tired to be an alert driver, so I pulled into a Hilton Hotel. I was on the third floor, and the lander's earthquake tripped off. And that was a 7.3 to 7.4, but the focal point of the energy moved up into the Mojave Desert. But it sure rocked my world, and I thought that whole hotel was going to come down on my head. So one or two quick points in the article, they suggested everybody have a minimum supply of water that'll last you a week or two, bottled water. And food is not that important, but secure any heavy item in your house that could come down on your head. The one fatality in the Napa earthquake, 2014, was a TV came down and killed a person. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mr. Walker.
Your Building Department is supposed to be building in safety, but I think the safety is missing. Last week, I reported that I was on Milpus. A gentleman was working at an Elio construction site. There is a business being renovated, and when I stopped and talked to him, and you could see all the work inside, which included electrical, he actually was coming out, and he was inebriated. He was drunk, had a big cup with alcohol in it. He had been using power tools, and when I talked to him, he said that he'd fallen off the roof of the building onto Milpus, onto the sidewalk, a few days earlier, despite photos of before and after, or during construction, really. And I think it was three emails to the Building and Safety Department, including enforcement and the city administrator. It wasn't until today, apparently, that someone did anything about it. That's five days. Electrical work could end in a fire. I don't know if anyone else understands it. I don't have a degree in construction, but I know that, and I find it unbelievable that no one immediately dropped what they were doing, because you can look at all of the evidence that I provided and go put a stop-work order up. I don't understand what your Building and Safety Department is doing or your enforcement. So I think you have a problem, and I think you need to get down to the bottom of it. But I also wanted to mention that the ordinance committee just had a meeting, and apparently they're going to go ahead and give Rob Dayton a $14,350 gift. And that is because they're no longer going to ask that he pay the patio dining fee for his restaurant, Broad House. It's kind of weird, because on Slide 5 of the PowerPoint presentation, city staff said that the maximum amount that anyone pays for an outdoor dining permit was $7,000. I don't understand where the difference came, or maybe they just didn't get that memo. But one of the other memos that the city didn't get, or at least the staff didn't get, is that we have an exception to the smoking rule that is actually all over the city. If you are a bar, and we have bars on State Street, The Good Lion has a patio, Satellite Bar has a patio, on the right-of-way, and bars under our ordinances permit alcohol-at-all hours of operation. But guess what? Your staff gave the opposite information to the city council members who took that vote.
Ms. Gott, your time is up. Mr. Michaels, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. I was brought here through Jason, and I'm sorry, I don't think I can pronounce your last name, so I hope you don't mind being referred to just as Jason. And anyway, what happened is I read an article in the newspaper about how Jason took photos of homeless people on his way to work and then brought those to the city council, addressing that problem. And I was And I was really, I felt good to hear these other people talking about the same subject. So anyway, my background is I moved here from Green Bay, Wisconsin, seven years ago, and ever since then, I've really felt bad about the image that's created by all these homeless people running around Santa Barbara, Galita, and Isla Vista. So, I've become quite involved in Community Covenant Church. In fact, I became the coordinator for the adult ministry, and we were looking for good projects to give our time to. And so anyway, I got involved with the showers of Mercy, and I ended up handing out food on the food line to 70 homeless out at the St. Michael's Church in Isla Vista. And I'm really getting motivated that I want to spend some of my time, in fact, a lot of my time, trying to help address the problem and solving the problem of homelessness. And I've been observing a fellow just out in a park here that has a bicycle and a wheelchair attached to the back end of it, and he's been sleeping in that park. I saw him at least six days out of the last two weeks, sleeping in the park right next to City Hall. And I think that housing is really needed for these poor people, and I totally support Brad and his group on what they're trying to do, and I think they have the right solution, taking up less space and giving them a bed, and then they can do, you know, other items of help for these people. So anyway, I offered to Jason that he should come out and work the food line with me. And he said, "Why don't you bring that to the whole city council?" So what I am doing right now is inviting the entire city council to join me on the food line, to pass out food after the showers are done at one of those events. And that's my offer, and I hope to hear from each and every one of you. Thank you.
And you gave us a handout, this one here.
And I gave you a nice handout, explaining everything.
Okay. Very good. Thanks. Mr. Locke, your turn. Ms. Abady, did you fill out a slip today?
I did.
Okay. Welcome.
Thanks. My name is Kenneth Locke. I think you've been talking about, I got here a little late, about the brain. I've done some comments recently when I was talking about the mind-body connection, the brain-body, and it's kind of, it's really important that we recognize that connection. And it turns out, I'm the first teacher healer that comes to that, and I was able to accomplish that through the athletic exercise of tennis. And I'm actually now, I call it the tennis dance method, and it's going to bring tennis into a renaissance where we understand it as an exercise, and then the benefits associated when it comes to mental health, intelligence, and then physical health in relation to coordination. It turns out that I'm the first tennis, I'd say genius of tennis, to actually become intelligent, have the intelligence to become a genius, and then also have the coordination. So just a combination of the two, and then with my intelligence, I was able to actually reach a point of where we can actually recognize tennis as an exercise that requires coordination. Right now, we're treating it as a sport where people are only developing one arm, and it's pretty basic stuff here, and it's just, I think it just requires somebody like myself to actually turn the light on it. And I've spoken with folks at Parks and Rec. Right now, this community suffers from a, it's kind of an addiction, sports addiction, and it's actually being taught in our educational system and promoted. And the idea is that there's no mental health benefit when it comes to sports, it turns out. And let's see, another way to look at it would be sports in relation to specialized education. So the idea is that how the students are actually becoming, say, just specialized at one sport, and for the sake of capitalism, for making a living. So it's just kind of like downhill from there kind of thing, and it just, who I represent is somebody that comes, I don't know, I hope not too late, and to kind of turn the light on the situation, and maybe we can actually rise ourselves above what's currently going on. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. That closes public comment. We move to the consent calendar. Are there items to read? Ms. Gorman?
Yes, Madam Mayor. Item 2, adoption of ordinance to grant a utility easement to Southern California Edison for the Metropolitan Transit District Transit Center. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara authorizing the conveyance of a public utility easement to Southern California Edison at Surface Parking Lot 3 for the Santa Barbara Metropolitan Transit District Transit Center. Item 3, adoption of ordinance approving Rantry Apartments loan restatement and subordination request. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara approving a restated loan agreement, restated deed of trust, and new 90-year affordability control covenant with Mariana Ranch LP, and authorizing the community development director to execute such agreements as necessary. And item 4, update of the city's Conflict of Interest Code resolution. Recommendation, the council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara adopting the Conflict of Interest Code of the City of Santa Barbara to incorporate by reference the Fair Political Practices Commission's Model Code and rescinding Resolution Number 14068.
Great. Thank you. I don't see any speaker slips or lights, so if there's no further objection, we'll waive further reading, and I'll take a motion to move the consent calendar forward. Dominguez, Rouse, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Consent calendar is done. Ms. Nedden, do we have a report from the ordinance committee, please?
We do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We unanimously forwarded an amended ordinance for outdoor dining license annual fees to keep the annual fee and to eliminate the rental fee.
Very good. And when might that come back to us, Mr. Casey? Okay, it's in the hopper. Very good. That moves us to, oh, go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
I have a question on that. This is a technical question, and do you know, does this go to Planning Commission, or does this just stay at the council?
Ordinance to council?
Yeah. I'm not a mayor, council member, Dominguez. This is not a planning-type ordinance, so it would go directly to city council. It is part of the budget considerations, however, which will be before you next Tuesday, I believe. But the ordinance itself will come back to the city council, as Mr. Casey indicated, we're not entirely sure when, but...
And obviously, I wasn't at the ordinance committee meeting, but it, what you recommended eliminates revenue, but it leaves a permitting fee, and I was just wondering if that implicates the AICSE, the Historical Landmarks Commission, because it does, potentially, someone could argue, change the whole regime in terms of how we use our sidewalks downtown.
Mr. Casey?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, council members, I would recommend that these are great questions that would be appropriate at the council at this time. It's not really agendized for discussion at this point, so I don't want to go too deep into those issues. I will say what was proposed with the ordinance committee, there'll be the same permitting and review process for outdoor dining that there is now, so there's no change to that whatsoever. But I would be more comfortable engaging in those types of questions when it's in front of you as the full council.
Thank you.
Okay, and I was just giving a heads up to the city attorney's office that these would be the, probably that's it, too. That's not necessarily the tip of the iceberg, that might be the whole ice cube.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Very good. We'll move on from the ordinance committee report to number 14. Ms. Clerk, will you read that for us?
Certainly. Item 14, public hearing regarding proposed increases to wastewater rates and waste and wastewater fees and solid waste rates.
Ms. Ierly? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm Renee Ierly, Environmental Services Manager, and I'm here today also with Malcolm Hamilton and Joshua Hagmert from Public Works, and today we will be conducting our utility rates public hearing. The presentation outline, I will briefly go over the Proposition 218 noticing, then followed up by our proposed solid waste rates for fiscal year 2020, and then Public Works will go over the wastewater and water fees and rates that they have proposed, and then finally, the public hearing. So in accordance with state law, city councils required to hold a public hearing prior to implementing increases to utility rates. Our Proposition 218 letters were mailed and emailed on April 24th to all accounts. In addition, they were posted on the city's website. As of just prior to this meeting, the clerk's office had received a total of five protest So over the last 18 months, we've brought the concept of solid waste restructuring and equity to the Finance Committee multiple times. In addition, these final recommendations for rate increases to meet the current year, fiscal year revenue requirements, and the rate restructure were reviewed by the Finance Committee on February 12th of this year. So our proposed rates are driven by three main areas, and this is an overall 16.3% increase. The first is increase in compensation to Marburg for collection services per their contract, which is 70% of CPI. The second is an increase in county tipping fees per our materials delivery agreement for the De Heeguis Resource Center. And the third is recovery of reserves used in fiscal year 18 to pay for an increase in trash disposal fees, and we propose to recover those over the next two fiscal years. Additionally, we're implementing a rate restructure this year, which is overall revenue neutral, and it increases the consistency and predictability for customers. It does require adjustments to rates within sectors. So while the proposed 16.3% rate increase is applied to all customers, individual bills are impacted differently depending on each account's specific services, and I'll describe that more in a few minutes. So again, in building the 13.3% rate increase for revenue requirements, the first is stipulated in our contract with Marburg that we increase that contract by 70% of CPI. For this coming fiscal year, that is 2.3%. We have an additional 11.6% increase to overall customer classes to cover the tipping fee established by our materials delivery agreement. The first year in that step-up was fiscal year 18, that was to $99 per ton. Last fiscal year was $102 per ton. This coming fiscal year, it's $150 per ton. What happens, that is the lead-up to be able to build the facility, but going forward, we have constraints built into that contract similar to Marburg, so that there is predictability in the year-over-year increase. The third element to the 16.3% is a 2.2% increase to all customer classes to rebuild In fiscal year 2018, per council direction, we used our reserves to compensate the county for the initial year, that 99 per ton increase in tipping fees. That reserve use totaled 1.3 million, and we are working to rebuild that over the next two fiscal years. So regarding the rate restructure, as the solid waste system has evolved over time, new complexities in service and old rate formulas have led to an imbalance in allocation of costs among customer classes, and we also have a complicated billing structure. So to increase transparency, consistency in charges, and ease in understanding, this restructure addresses four goals. The first is equity. The proposal upgrades and simplifies the current rate structure for all customer classes, single-family apartments and businesses. So it's intended to ensure that rates charged to each customer class recover the cost of service attributable to that class. Additionally, with a few changes to classifications, the city can increase the consistency of the types of services offered and how they are charged to each customer class by service level and then by the frequency of the service per week. Second is revenue predictability. The proposed rate structure establishes a system to calculate a base rate for fixed costs for operating the system, and includes a variable cost for container size. This is the first step to apply consistent costs across all customers. Three is in alignment with state legislation. Current solid waste law, AB 341 and AB 1826, categorizes small multi-unit properties, four or fewer units, as single-family, and five or greater as multi-unit residential. So the proposed sector redesign aligns the city with the state classifications and increases our ability to demonstrate compliance. And then four is integration into the utility billing system. The billing system is slated for an update, and simplifying the solid waste structure enables charges to be billed without the extensive custom programming which is now required. So this will improve calculation times and ease customer questions. So again, in summary, our overall revenue requirements for fiscal year 20 are 4.2 million, and that equates to the 16.3% increase. So these are some examples of what the rate increases look like by customer type. So the proposed rate structure continues to incentivize recycling across board for all customers, but some of the variation in the percentages by customer that you're seeing demonstrates the invariability that's in the current rate structure, and that's what we're fixing and moving forward. So coming forward next year, you would see a uniform application of any rate increase across all rate structures. So one of the changes that we're making is combining and creating what is called a small residential category. So that will be the first two line items that you see in that table. So that will be both the single-family residence and the two-to-four-unit, multi-unit apartments. Their services tend to be similar. This also aligns with state solid waste law, and it creates, a sector has a standard base charge and a standard per-unit container charge. The base charge also includes unlimited recycling and green waste. For large residential, that's the third row that you see before you, this is a renaming of the five-plus-unit apartments. Again, this aligns with state law, and as their services are commercial in nature, this also aligns them with business sector in service offerings and pricing. So recycling and green waste services are 50% less than the rate of trash, as for business. As a sector, some of the smaller units in this, in this category, that really the five-to-10 unit buildings, were being subsidized by larger, multi-unit building customers. So this is really an equity adjustment within this sector. We've been doing additional outreach to all of them in anticipation of the change in their rates, and in particular, there, on the small end, that five-to-10 unit end, there are about 119 customers that our waste reduction team has already personally either had phone calls or site visits to them to explain the change in the rates, and then also to start doing analysis of their services to try to right-size them and show them some reduction in increases where possible. For businesses, about a third of them will see some potential increases similar to the smaller, multi-unit buildings. Again, this is due to the, some of the subsidizing from the larger business accounts and the rebalancing within this sector. The restructure addresses all of this. And again, the waste reduction team is working with these customers proactively as well before we begin the rollout of the rate increase starting July 1st. And so with that, I'm happy to take some questions before we move on to the wastewater.
I don't see any lights. Thank you so much. So wastewater rates is next? Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Malcolm Hamilton, administrative analyst in the Water Resources Division. Joined with me today is Sean Korn from HDR Engineering, our rate consultant, and we'll be going over the wastewater rates for fiscal years 20, 21, 22, and water and wastewater fees for fiscal year 20. For the sake of transparency and the public record, we're going to try to move quickly, but Sean does get into some details, and I'm going to turn it over to him at one point. So looking at the outline, we'll first go over the proposed fee changes, the path we took to get here today with public meetings. I will turn it over to Sean, Mr. Korn, at that point, and he will go through the rate study, and then we'll go to the recommendation. So kind of starting at the 30,000-foot level before we get into this, I think what we're trying to say here is that the rates we're presenting to you today and the fees continue to allow the wastewater system to be, play that essential role in the protection of public health and the environment. And these rates will allow for... And these rates will allow for continued investment in our capital program, our Pago capital program, the system assets we have, and also debt service associated with some of these projects for the El Estero Facility Plan. Recommendation B today is in regards to the proposed FY twenty fees. It's regulated not under the same state law as the Prop two eighteen, but also requires public hearing, so this is for that as well. For both water and wastewater in FY twenty, we are recommending a three percent across-the-board increase in our fees. This will allow us to keep pace with inflation and continue to provide high-quality services. We're doing a clarification on reserve capacity charges. Right now, the fee resolution can be read as though you have an indefinite waiver from reserve capacity charges when you're involved in a disaster, so if your home is burned down. And what we're doing is we're limiting that to a five-year waiver, but we've been questioned on if it's indefinite or in perpetuity, essentially. And then some minor language edits for clarity and consistency. And specifically to wastewater, we're introducing a new administrative review process. If customers believe that they are not in the correct classification, we want to give them that formal avenue to make a case as to why they should be changed, and so we want to put that in the fee resolution and allow staff to respond in kind. So turning now to the wastewater rates, staff and Mr. Korn and many other people in the wastewater fund have put in a lot of work over the whole last year. So we've met many times with the Water Commission, the Ad Hoc Committee for Water Commission, and culminating in today, the public hearing. And looking at recommendation C today, I did want to touch on the ten-year financial plan, and it was included in the packet. A lot of times we do financial planning, but we don't ask City Council to necessarily approve that, goes on in the background. But for the wastewater fund, it's going to be important to formally show lending authorities such as the State Revolving Fund that we have made the commitment to a certain financial path, and so this avoids us having to come back, and it shows a couple of things, one of which is five percent annual revenue increases, keeping pace, so continuing to provide for our operating expenditures that are rising annually but offering high-quality services. It also funds our six-year capital Pago, capital improvement plan. We meet our debt service obligations, so we have a debt service reserve. We have a debt coverage ratio. We meet all of those as well in this plan. And then reserves, I do want to draw attention to this. In the long term, we maintain our council policy reserves, but what this financial plan shows is that in the short term, we plan to cash fund the El Estero Electrical Renewal Project. We haven't been as competitive as we'd like in the SRF application because we, one, haven't had a financial plan approved, and two, you need to be further along in the project. But it's a kind of a catch-twenty-two, where we have to put out cash to improve our rating to then get the SRF and get payback. So what this shows is a payback from the SRF in a couple of years. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Korn for his portion.
Thanks.
Thank you, Matt. Malcolm, Madam Mayor, council members, appreciate the opportunity to be here. I'm going to walk you briefly through the overall process and approach to establishing the wastewater rates, as well as talk about the key summary recommendations and conclusions of the study. As we start off a study, we want to make sure that we have our goals and objectives in mind, and as we started this project off, we wanted to make sure that we had adequate revenue to operate and maintain the wastewater utility into the future. And so as Malcolm mentioned, we looked over a long-term time period, in this case, ten years, to look at what those revenue needs are to fund those operating capital needs to maintain the facilities and infrastructure. We also want to make sure that we meet our legal requirements to develop cost-based, proportional, and equitable wastewater rates so that we can come forward and propose those rates to meet the requirements as part of that. We also don't want to lose sight of prudent financial management criteria, though. So as we go through the rate study process, we want to make sure that we meet our debt service coverage ratio. So on existing debt and any planned future debt, we want to make sure that we can meet that credit check so that the city can issue debt at the lowest cost possible and that you can maintain those payments over the long term. We also want to make sure that we're able to fund renewal and replacement. This is the maintenance of the system, making sure that we can replace, repair, maintain everything on an annual basis, so we've calculated those projections, as well as Malcolm mentioned, the council reserve requirements as part of that. So we take all the city-specific information, the system operations, the customer characteristics, and we develop analysis based on generally accepted methodologies as outlined by the Water Environment Federation Manual Practice Number Twenty-Seven. It gives us our approach to do this, and then we tailor this to that. To do that, we have a three-step process: revenue requirement, cost of service, rate design. Revenue requirement is the size of the pie, so how much revenue is needed in each year to meet the operating capital needs. That cost of service then splits that pie into different pieces based on how each customer type or customer class of service utilizes the system. So what cost do they drive on the system versus their current revenues today? And then we design rates to meet those needs. So as we develop the revenue requirement, we talked about our overall approach, looking at the revenue needs, making sure we're meeting our financial planning criteria, meeting our debt service coverage, ending reserve fund balances. As I mentioned, we looked over a ten-year period. Our focus for rates is on the next three-year period as we developed our proposed transition plan. And it's important to note that this is based on a standalone basis, so the wastewater utility is funded by wastewater rates and fees. So there's no transfers from any other city funds or other sources of revenues to support this. We want to see what the impacts to rates are for this. We use what's called the cash basis approach. Essentially what that is, is we look year by year. What are those operating capital expenses in year one, year two, year three? How do we fund those as we move forward? So the summary of the revenue requirement, we have a five-year projection here. We started with fiscal year two thousand and nineteen budget. We projected over the next ten-year period. The focus here is on fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, and twenty twenty-two. For our rate projections, we also have two additional years. We start with that O and M projection. This is the operating expenses that are necessary to maintain the facilities. That's our component where we project that forward at approximately three percent per year over the timeframe that we're looking at for inflationary impacts. We then add to that that renewal and replacement need. So how much of the annual revenue should be put back into the system to maintain the facilities that are in place? And that's this darker bar here added to the top of each of those years that runs approximately five million dollars per year as part of that. The next component is our annual debt service payment. So in nineteen and twenty, that block of that green color on the top of this right now is about the same. As we go out into the future years, this is the estimated interest and principal eventually as we go out through the years for the funding of the El Estero Electrical Project. So that does increase as we go out over time. The sliver up there of the red, this is based on the budget and projections as we went through this process. That's funds that are going to reserves to either maintain target balances or to fund capital improvements in that following year so that we have the revenues available to fund the necessary improvements. Based on the current revenues and, or I'm sorry, the current rates and the current customer characteristics, our revenues are projected here at that dashed horizontal line. So that does include a minor component of growth over the years with new customers connecting to the system, but you can see as we get into fiscal year twenty twenty, we are deficient and deficient in each subsequent year after that. To target our goal, that revenue line would need to increase as this solid line does on the screen here. So as we talked about, with those, with the solid line on my prior slide here, this is the picture of reserves over the next five-year period. So you can see in twenty nineteen, we are just slightly below that council target based on the projections we have in place today. We are below that council policy level in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one to cash finance the start of that El Estero Electrical Project. When we get out to twenty twenty-two and out into through twenty twenty-four, that same five-year period, we get back to our required minimum reserves as part of this plan. So overall, revenue increases are necessary to prudently fund the overall operating capital expenses and maintain the financial sustainability of the wastewater utility. That's there to fund our annual capital improvement projects, meet our annual debt service, both existing and future, as well as those inflationary increases that are incurred on the O and M expenses. As Malcolm mentioned, that's approximately five percent per year for the next three years for the recommendation in front of you this afternoon. Again, that is five percent on the system. That is not the actual bill increase that a customer may receive going forward. As we looked at, we are meeting our key financial planning criteria over the long term. So we dip below the reserves as an example, but we get those back up to where they need to be over time. Now we know the size of the pie. How do we collect this from our different customers? This is key to meeting the proportionality requirements of Proposition two eighteen. So what is it? Well, it's that method to equitably allocate the cost between different customers. Each customer utilizes different facilities, and they impact the system differently as part of their wastewater generation and collection and conveyance to El Estero. The other reason is utilities don't track costs by customer type, right? So we don't just treat residential waste or commercial waste. It all comes down the pipes to El Estero, and it all gets treated, so we need this method to look at this. Why is this important? Because it provides that proportionality, and the revenues that are collected from each customer class reflects the cost that they incur on the system. This also gives us on the far right-hand side our key objective. It gives us unit costs, which ultimately are the rates in year one of the proposed three-year time period. So just to give you lots of numbers here, I apologize, but to give you an idea of how this proportionality works, we take each individual line item in the budget, and we determine what need is being met. So why is the city incurring this cost to provide wastewater service? Is it a volume to get it from point A to point B? Is it strength, biochemical oxygen demand, total suspended solids, or ammonia? How nasty is that wastewater? The nastier it is, the harder it is to treat, the more costly it is to treat. Or is it a customer-related? We just have to get out bills, right? So there's postage costs according to that. Or a demand component? We have to size the system to meet the needs of each of the different customer types depending on how they generate wastewater volumes. So when you look at this, when we've gone through each of the components, if you look at the volume, the first column with percentages and go down to the bottom, you'll see of the total cost, we have allocated five point six million of the cost to the volume allocation factor. If using these proportionality factors, residential would be allocated seventy-three percent of that five point six million dollars, and so on down the line. Commercial, eighteen percent. Commercial high, eight point nine. So as we go through this process, we've looked at why you incur the costs, who benefits from those costs based on these different allocation factors. The other key component of this slide that's important to note is on the high-strength surcharge. This is a new recommendation and proposal for the council to consider, and under that, we are only allocating the treatment-related costs. So there's a zero in the volume component. It's only those strength components that we're looking at as part of the development of that proposed P. So when we take all these costs and we allocate them out, then we can compare them to the overall system revenue needs. That's the five percent, the bar, kind of reddish bar right in the middle, and the current revenues of each class. And so what this is showing on this slide is that in order to generate a five percent system increase, residential customers will need to go up two point four percent, commercial customers, six point eight percent, and commercial high industrial, seven point four percent. Now, as a note, this also excludes the high-strength surcharge component because our current revenues today to compare that to. So we've calculated that as well. This is a very tight cost of service. We're within a couple percentage points of the system average. That means that as you've gone through your prior analyses, that you, your rates have reflected cost of service. We've just got some minor adjustments to make, primarily as a result of an increased focus on the overall strength component. So you've made major improvements at El Estero to treat ammonia and to get that out of the wastewater so you can meet your discharge permit requirements in the future, and so that's some change in this shift to commercial in this case based on that. So summary of the cost of service, there are some minor differences. Again, we're within a couple percent of the system average, which is very good, but each of these reflect the overall usage and facility requirements of the different customer classes, and it's that proportional and equitable allocation to meet the requirements of Prop two eighteen. Again, this develops our rates for year one, and this is something that should be reviewed periodically because things change. Customer class demographics change, volumes change depending on what businesses come and go throughout time for the city. So now we know the size of the pie. We know the piece of the pie for each customer class. Now we can design those rates to meet those needs. So as we looked at the rate structures, overall, they're based on the revenue requirement and cost of service, that's meaning our proportionality. For residential, the single-family customer class is billed a monthly fixed charge plus a volume charge up to a cap, so up to a cap of ten HCF. HCF is hundred cubic feet. Each cubic foot is, a hundred cubic feet is seven hundred and forty-eight gallons. So that cap is there to reflect the overall wastewater volumes that go back to the system. Over ten, on average, for that class is outdoor use. So think of the water use for lawn watering and doing other things. That's not coming back to the wastewater system. For multifamily, we've made some, again, recommended changes. For the two-to-four attached units, the small multifamily, we're recommending that the cap be raised from eight HCF to ten HCF. When we looked at the consumption data for those customers, very similar to a single-family home. So duplex, triplex, they have very similar characteristics from a usage component. On the five-plus attached, so your larger multifamily, in general, they had very low use per live-dwelling unit, and that's primarily because a lot of them have separate irrigation meters, so that water's not coming back into the wastewater system. And so we're proposing eliminating that cap because their primary use is all indoor for those larger complexes. For commercial and commercial high industrial, we've combined that. You previously had commercial one through three, commercial four, and then your industrial. We're putting those into two classes of service based on their strength characteristics, and then developing that high-strength surcharge to reflect that additional cost to treat high-strength waste. So here's the single-family rate structure. The present rate in the light gray, currently, the base fee is nineteen dollars and sixty-three cents per month, zero to ten HCF at three dollars and forty-one cents per hundred cubic feet. Into the future, you can see the fixed charge has been increased in twenty twenty, and the volumetric charge has been decreased slightly in that first year. So that's that balancing out. We have a little more fixed cost coming into the system based on the cost-of-service analysis, so that volume piece goes down to net that overall change in overall revenues from this class. Years two and three, it's an across-the-board adjustment for each unit, each billing component based on that five percent. What does this mean for your typical single-family customer? We have a range here of different consumption patterns, so zero, HCF, four HCF, eight HCF, ten HCF, and twelve. Ten and twelve are the same. We have the cap. That's the kind of the idea here with that number is it stays at the same. You can see going across the bottom line, the proposed rates have an impact to your single-family customers of less than a dollar per month with the proposal, proposed rates that we put together for your consideration. Multifamily, here's our, again, they have a base fee, same base fee as other customers, and then we have our one-to-four, previously zero to eight, now recommended zero to ten, and then five-plus, all usage based on that same volumetric charge for the residential customers. On the commercial side, they're billed either a minimum bill based on the meter size or the actual volume of water consumed times the actual volumetric rate. So if a customer uses roughly less than ten HCF per month, then they would pay that minimum bill. That's that break-even number almost for all those different meter sizes. Otherwise, they pay their water use times that volume rate on the bottom. Again, this is increasing based on those cost-of-service results. Our commercial high industrial, same approach, the minimum bill approach, but that, you can see that volume charge is a little bit higher. That's based on the strength component for these customer classes and the higher costs associated with treating that higher wastewater strength. And then finally, our high-strength surcharge proposal. These are based on an average cost of treatment. As I mentioned back in the cost-of-service slide, we only allocate those treatment-related costs to this customer group, and it's charged to all those commercial, commercial high industrial customers that have wastewater discharges greater than the target limits that we've established for this. And so that's based on BOD, that's the biochemical oxygen demand, at seven hundred and fifty milligrams per liter. TSS, our suspended solids, at eight hundred and fifty milligrams per liter, and ammonia at greater than ninety milligrams per liter. Ammonia is the NH3 component there, if you've forgotten ninth-grade chemistry class, so that's the easy conversion. So when we look at this, we have our BOD charge. So when we look at this, we have our BOD charge of 28 cents. So that would be applied to those customers that are tested and monitored and based on those sampling programs for each of those. If they're over the 750 milligrams, then they would be charged 28 cents per pound for that. TSS, 38 cents per pound for TSS, and then for the ammonia piece, 89 cents. And then those increase each year as well, based on the cost to provide that service. With that, I'm going to turn it back to Malcolm to talk a little bit more about the high-strength surcharges.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Korn. I want to talk a little bit about what we've been doing on the staff side for the high-strength surcharges. And initially, of course, we're going to identify the potential customers that may be impacted by this new surcharge, and we've got three categories here. One is septic and portable restroom haulers. At this point, this is really only going to impact Marborg Industries, but we'll talk more about that in the next slides. Alcohol beverage manufacturers, so they're manufacturing like breweries, wineries, distilleries on-site. We'll get more into how their impacts, what the impact is for them, but it's, it would be infrequent for them, the surcharge. And industrial laundry operations, although all the industrial laundry operations right now in this city are part of our pre-treatment program and based on their strength levels, wouldn't be impacted, it's possible that a new one would come into town and potentially be over our limits. So we've been doing customer outreach because it's a new surcharge, and we've been trying to educate customers. And there are really two groups here. Our pre-treatment program customers, they're enrolled already. We have about 13 industrial customers in this class. We have a relationship, so we've been able to reach out to them, kind of educate them on how they'd be charged and how it would be based on their quarterly samples. So we sample their waste quarterly, and if they're over the limits, then they may be subject to the surcharge. The other group are customers that aren't in our pre-treatment program. So what we've been doing is a lot of boots-on-the-ground outreach, particularly to breweries, and we've been going in person to meet with them. We've developed some material that they can post inside their brewery, described how the charges apply to contact us if you're going to have a batch discharge, bad batch of beer that you've dumped down the drain or you'd like to dump. And so we've been developing that relationship, and we've been educating them on the new charges. So specifically about the alcohol beverage manufacturers, we're really talking about minimal volumes and infrequent kind of batch dumps where they may have, maybe testing a new kind of brew style and it didn't go correctly, and they want to put it down the drain. But ultimately, it's minimal cost impact, so on the order of magnitude of about $2 to $300. And from what we understand, this is highly infrequent, that they would be subject to a surcharge. Typically, when you're getting a brewery or distillery going, you may have some test batches to get the equipment and all the kinks worked out, but after that, it's really, really quite rare that you have this batch dump kind of event. So we'll spend a few slides quickly and then be done, but we do want to spend some time because Marborg Industries, based on the rate study estimate, is potentially going to see about a $300,000 increase annually in their wastewater fees. And looking at, all to the order of magnitude of discharges, we were talking about 750 gallons for a brewery to maybe 1,500. Here, Marborg discharges about 5 million gallons per year into the wastewater system. And so our outreach efforts have been comprised of a couple letters we sent in December of 2017 and June 2018. We recently wrapped up a project at the Alistero Resource Center as the secondary treatment process improvement project, and to get out in front of that, we provided some early cost estimates. Those estimates were about $250,000 to $300,000 in December 2017, June 18. And then more recently, when we had our strength allocations from Mr. Korn, we provided those to Marborg so they could take those and do their analysis and see if they could estimate the impact. And then most recently, we had to sit down with them to review the rate study, answer any questions they may have. We wanted to provide counsel with a feel for what these impacts may be to their customers, and if they had to pass these fees on to their customers, what would that look like? So we took two sample services here, the portable restroom service and septic pumping service. So for kind of a standard portable restroom service, your current customer cost would be about $690 a month. The current treatment cost to Marborg is $2.88, and the proposed rates would increase that treatment cost to $24. And so if they were to pass that on to their customers entirely, it'd be about a 3% increase in that monthly charge. Now, looking at the septic service, a very similar calculation. If you have a 5,000-gallon tank, you're pumping that probably every seven years or so. The current customer cost charged by Marborg is $2,400. The current treatment cost for Marborg is $30 for that wastewater, and the proposed treatment cost is $250 based on the new rates. What that works out to is about $2.60 a month, if you break it down over seven years, but it does represent about a 9% increase from currently. So this is the last slide we have here, and we want to go over some implementation options if we were to consider a way to reduce the impact to Marborg upfront. The first option would be staff's recommendation. We think that the cost of service is a very sound cost-of-service study and represents the rates, and we need to make those continued investments in the wastewater system. However, we did look at a couple other options that still make the wastewater system whole, but would provide kind of a reduced impact to Marborg. The second option here is a general fund subsidy. So it'd be a payment by the general fund to make up any reduction in the rate we'd be charging to Marborg. We looked at, and when we brought this to finance committee, they asked us to bring back the impacts if we were to lower that to about 200%. Right now, the increase is about 750%. It's a substantial increase. The impacts would be about $230,000. That would be the general fund subsidy to make the wastewater system whole. And finally, option three is to negotiate a payment plan with Marborg. So this is not a reduction like the second option. It would be more of a deferral of the costs that they pay. So an example of this, and this would need to be negotiated, would be potentially we don't increase their rates in the first year, and over the course of two more years, they would, they would pay back the deferral of cost with some interest. So we'd give them a discount in fiscal year 20, and in fiscal years 21 and 22, they would pay back those discounts with an interest, essentially acting as a loan. With discussions with Marborg, they were supportive of looking into this approach when we had a meeting with them. So going over the recommendation once more, to hold a public hearing for the solid wastewater rates, wastewater rates, wastewater and water fees, and consider appropriate protests. And ultimately, recommendation C was to approve the wastewater 10-year financial plan. With that concludes my presentation.
Thanks. Ms. Stinn, is there questions for, you say your name?
Korn.
Korn, okay.
Just like a virtual.
Mr. Korn or Mr. Hamilton? Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a quick question. It's also from Ms. Ierle to the definition of single-family versus multi-unit. So with solid waste, single-family applies to four units or fewer, but for wastewater, it's two or above?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sneddon, for, single-family is still, is still a single family, a one-unit. What we have done is combine for our purposes and categorization of what's called now small residential. And so that's the single units and the two through four multi-unit, multifamily buildings into one category.
Can we just look at that slide again? Just, I just want to be really clear on it myself. I think it's, I can't read the slide numbers on this little. It's like maybe slide 12?
Oh, 12. Yeah, it's going to be like 30.
This one. So when it says one-unit, single-family residential...
That would be a standalone home right now. And then the two through four unit below it, those are multi-unit buildings, small apartment buildings, and both, both those, row one and row two, are now condensed into a new sector called small residential.
Small residential.
Yes, because the services are essentially identical to them.
Okay. And that was to, also is consistent with state definitions?
That's correct.
Okay. That was my question on that. So this, these aren't inconsistent definitions between solid waste?
They are not. They're consistent.
Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
Just a question. I'll raise it since we received a letter and protest today. I just wanted to understand the different sizes of the, of the trash. So they're, they're asking if there could be a possibility of a 20-gallon trash container including the new base rate of 30 rather than the 35, and I'm just wondering if there is opportunities for smaller trashcans or if we're trying to simplify rates? Just trying to understand where we are.
So, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Friedman, obviously, currently, right now, we do not have the 20-gallon option. And I would propose, at least for the short term, we continue with, with the delineations that we have, starting with the 35-gallon. Other jurisdictions who have implemented the 20-gallon, while there are obviously customers who only generate a very small amount, there tend to be a lot of operational difficulties that can get quite expensive as well. So it's one of those things that over time, I would say, as we're evaluating the overall system and its, and its functioning, and as we're bringing Tahigus up online and what kind of services we're offering at the curb, it would be included in that analysis. But for right now, I would say in the short term, it probably, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us.
So just, just to clarify for me, so as we're ramping up the system, trying to understand how it works, and then we're going to be constantly evaluating, reevaluating it with the new system, there is an opportunity to revisit the 20-gallon request once we kind of understand the dynamics of our, of our streams?
So that's correct. I mean, we will be doing regular analysis on overall material generation and waste-reduction opportunities and sort of incentives to try to migrate people depending on their service-level needs.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dominguez?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question about slide nine. I'm sorry, it looks like it's slide eight, the solid waste proposed rates. So in 2020, they're going to 150. Do we know what the cap is over the next several years, what our maximum per ton is?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Dominguez, we know that for next fiscal year, our, our estimate is the increase to $155 per ton, and then in fiscal year, 22 to $160 per ton. Once those estimated rates increases come into play with the contract, we are set up to have a CPI adjustment similar to the way that we have with the Marborg contract. So there's not a total cap per se, but it becomes more of an operational cost year over year that's tied to CPI.
Did we ever fix the contract? I know there were no caps originally, so if there is negligence or an accident, we're going to pay our 40% or whatever our share of the trash we're hauling there. Is that still the case, even if it wasn't our fault?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, we do have a structure in place for discussion and negotiation of, of costs and responsibilities, like dependent on, it would be triggered by, out of ordinary operations or events, and that would go over a certain percentage increase, and that would bring all of the, the members of the, of the Tahigus project together and back to the table to have a discussion about those costs.
There's no mandatory element to that? It would just be a discussion and up to the management to decide?
It would. We would, and we would, we would need to bring anything that's substantial, obviously, like back to council if it would be a change in direction from the intent of the agreement.
And the, these numbers, I want to make sure I'm dealing apples with apples. These are, this corresponds to the original RFP, which was set at $99 a ton? So we're using the same denominations or units?
Mayor and Councilmember Dominguez, if I'm understanding you correctly, the initial agreement that was signed in 2016 had the first two years stipulated, that was the $99 per ton, and then what was actually $120 per ton for 19, fiscal year 19? Because of the delay in the project, there was some negotiation, and the county came back with the $102 per ton to keep, so that the project could keep moving, but recognizing that there was a delay in having the new financial analysis done for the project that adjusted the out-years, including fiscal year 20 and 21, which is, I mentioned, are now at $150 and $155 per ton. So they're still in alignment, but because of time, there, there were adjustments, which were all, all of that process was incorporated into the agreement we have with the county.
Great, thank you.
Very good. So we have a public comment. Speaker slips. Sarah Woodburn, you'll be first, followed by Phil Walker, and I think Mr. Casey's bringing up a Hillary Hauser. Ms. Woodburn, are you here? Okay. Mr. Walker, you're here. Three minutes at the mic, please. Thanks.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. You know, I've heard a lot of doubt expressed about the performance of the, now I know it's underway, the construction and performance of the Tahigus Resource Recovery Facility. And too bad you can't get a guarantee, a performance guarantee cast in stone, you know? But if there are doubts raised, it's good to investigate every doubt and to the nth degree. That's the way I've seen over the years, projects that were sold, like the best you could do is even, they're better than that, and they didn't pan out, cost the city a lot of money. So the one other thing at Alistero, having worked there as a treatment plant operator for 35 years, it's good to spend the money, and the rate increases look very reasonable to me, and you don't want to wind up in a situation, what recently happened at LAX, when the ATSs or automatic transfer switches did not kick on when they dropped DWP power. It created a mini nightmare. So all this equipment costs money to maintain, and I think the city's doing a very reasonable job in maintaining it and sort of massaging the cost. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hauser?
Madam Mayor, City Council Hillary Hauser from Hill of the Ocean. Glad to be here today. Thanks for listening to my broken record, and that is that, you know, waste, wastewater is that nobody wants to pay for it because it just, wait, throw it out the window. It's sort of a sociological thing. And these rates are really reasonable, that the rate increases 58 cents more, I mean, for the single-family, the total increase represents $1.70 a day. So this is the luxury we just can't live without, and it's worth a lot more than that. So the 10-year financial plan now through 2029 shows it stays pretty steady, 5% a year. In the future, future, I don't know when we're going to start talking about sea level rise and having to move the plant up to the city hall, but at some point, there's going to be costs associated with that. The waste recycling facility at Tahigus, I saw somewhere that, you know, it's going to increase the recycling rate to 85%. That's huge. And so we, to do this, we have to pay for it, and because with Tahigus' filled capacity, then what? So those increases are just crucial. Water, in the staff reports, is water use above a certain level is likely used for watering. And with all this rain, we can't relax on this. Today is a day that gives us a hint of how hot and dry it can be, and so conserving water is important, and paying for it is one way to... so conserving water is important, and paying for it is one way to conserve. The high strength, this is my broken record for years. I'd like to see pre-treatment requirements on industry, hospitals, so forth. The business of sending everything to the wastewater plant, you take care of it. I don't know. I think in the future, may not tomorrow, we've got to be thinking that way, not to rely on El Estero to do everything. And the septic fees for hauling should be higher to match more with the wastewater treatment plant is. A lot of people resist getting off of septic systems because you really don't have to pay anything, hardly. So I'm here to support the staff recommendations and the rate increase, and I think they should keep going up to pay for something very valuable. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dean Stewart is our next speaker. Come on up. And you'll be followed by Michael Collins. If Ms. Woodburn left, she did give us a letter that we all read, so thanks to her for that. Mr. Stewart?
Hi, thank you very much. My name is Dean Stewart. I live in the 1200 block of Bath Street. And within District 6, where I live, there are many, many, many units that would be affected by this. Standard apartment buildings, but also more typically old houses that have been divided up into apartments. So the rates will go up significantly in, in our building. This is a five dwelling unit building, and there are many like this. And the rate structure seems to suggest that it will go up by $100. So that's a lot. And what that translates into, for a huge number of people within District 6, is a rental increase. That's what will happen. And city council needs to realize that. My general feeling about Santa Barbara these days is that the biggest job that the city council can do is make Santa Barbara livable for working people. Rants, parking, all those kinds of things. Do you want to be responsible for a rental increase? You will be. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Madam Mayor, City Councilmember, my name is Michael Collins, and my wife and I are here. We own, have owned for over 40 years, two of these five to 10-unit apartments. They're actually homes that were cut up into apartments many, many years ago. And they provide, and have provided for the last 40 years, housing for low and moderate income people. The kinds of people that I understand you're trying to provide housing for. One of the houses we have has five units, and one has six. Dean is, has been in one of the houses probably for 20, over 20 years. I did a calculation of, we, we get garbage, we have three garbage cans that are taken out twice a week, four recycling, and I think three green, green waste. We pay about $90 a month. With this new, putting us into over five units, five or more, we'll be paying $190 a month. So as Dean says, that's a $15 to $20 a month increase per apartment, per, per unit. And that just doesn't seem fair. If, if my house was classified as four units, I'd be paying $89 a month with the new rates. Now it's going to be 190, just because the house has five units and not four. The other house has four units and three single rooms. Is that, what, how many units is that? It's classified as five. So there again, your, your, this new rate will be affecting people that are in large part low income in Santa Barbara. They're professionals. They've been here for, some of them 15, 20, 25 years. Some are retired. Some are, are struggling. And I have tried to control rents so that they could live here. And they love living here. And the homes are, are homes. The, the lady that spoke about that the two and two to four unit, units are like single-family units. They're, you know, they're landscaped like it, and their, their rate should be similar. Well, the houses that I have are, were, were houses at one time. One is only 2,800 square feet. And it's got beautiful landscaping. And so why, why should I be classified as a, a large residential unit with? So I just wish you'd, you'd come up with some way to, to address this. Thank you very much.
Time is up, so thank you. That closes public comment. I think we got everybody. And we'll take some clarifying questions from the council. What we're looking at is the recommendation A, B, and C. We've held our public hearings today. And if I'm understanding, Mr. Hamilton, we need to approve the 10-year financial plan for the wastewater rates as part of this.
That's correct, Madam Mayor. I, I would also, staff would like direction on one of these options having to do with Marburg, so it would be inclusive of A, B, and C, and then direction on how to, how to move forward with one of these.
Okay. And the finance committee did review all these matters?
The finance committee did not see these impacts. We were directed, the finance committee, to bring back option two, to look at what the impacts would be from 200%, kind of lowering the reduction. Yeah, but they have seen all the fee stuff. They approved the noticing. And option three is, it was developed just recently. This is the first time we've had it at a public meeting with Marburg.
All right. And I see a representative from Marburg in the room, but didn't choose to speak. So I'm assuming that their support is for option three. I can say that one looks good to me. You get a little bit of break paying it, but if Marburg is producing intense, effluent, that needs to special treatment, then they should be paying for it. And that's where I'm starting off. But Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Corn, anything else before we?
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to add that, yeah, we can absolutely work with option three to, to defer or reduce their payments in the first year.
Very good. Mr. Dominguez, go ahead, please.
So I'm not sure if it's correct to say contrarian or a protest vote, but I'm going to be voting no on the recommendations today. And I'm probably the only one, but I want to just explain my reasons. And it goes along the lines of what I heard in public comment, except for Ms. Hauser. I think this is maybe the first day in four years where I'm going to be disagreeing with you, but not doing it disagreeably, particularly with regard to the waste and the impact it has on our residents. And it has impacts on our residents in a couple ways. One, we're not incentivizing our residents to reduce the waste stream. And I think, I think if you came back up here, that would be what you'd say you left out of your message, which is the first goal should be to not produce the trash in the first place, and not use the single-use recyclable bottle in the first place. Because once it gets up there, it's not doing anyone any environmental good. It was really used that one time, and then it ends up, who knows where. We're not sure where our recycling is going. We're not sure if China's going to take any more of it, if it's going to Vietnam, India. We're not sure what they're doing with it once they take it. Does it end up in the ocean? By 2050, there's more plastic in the ocean than fish. So I think our goal as the city that founded Earth Day is not to bury the stuff that we don't want in the earth, but to actually stop producing stuff that we don't need. And this plan, these plans, aren't encouraging residents to do that. The other problem is the out-of-control spending. This, this was an RFP several years ago that we put out to bid at $99 a ton, and now we're looking at 150, 155, so 50%, 55% over the bid. And part of the reason we ended up with this plan is because other plans that would have been more environmental may have cost more. So now we have the plan that we didn't really all like, but is costing us the same amount. So it's, it's kind of a lose-lose. And, and I'm afraid we haven't done anything to address the fact that it went so far over the budget. 10, 20, 30 million dollars over budget. We won't know until it's built. We had the same problem with wastewater treatment facilities. Two of those facilities went $10 million over budget each, and I haven't seen us redress those problems. So I can't, in good conscience, approve this huge ramp up in capital spending until we've redressed those problems. In terms of the wastewater, I'm sorry, the waste, I also think that the costs aren't equitably distributed amongst housing units, amongst households and renter units, as some of the, the public comment indicated. Tenants generally don't see these bills. I've been a renter all my life in Santa Barbara. I've never seen one of these bills. I only see it when I go ask staff to take a look, or I go to my neighbors' homes. So we don't know what the impact is going to be on their rent. Is the landlord going to absorb it? Is the landlord going to pass it on? Again, with all due respect, this, these, what may seem to some people like small increases, these are huge. We have 60% of our population are tenants. They don't own their home because they can't afford, in most cases, to buy a home. If they, the statistics are really terrible in our country. If, if a household gets a bill for $400 or more that they weren't expecting, they have to go to extraordinary resources to pay that bill. And so for most of our households, these are huge increases. And if someone loses their job, if they're someone on a fixed income, if they're someone who's retiring, and their pension is lower than their salary, and their rents are going up, and yet all these costs are going up, we just have done a horrible job of, of containing costs. And I'm certainly not blaming, blaming staff. Let me make one thing clear. I think they've done a reasonably diligent job of trying to fight these cost increases. But we, as a council and as a city, need to be putting more pressure on Sacramento to fix some of these problems. Sweden is a, one of the most environmental-friendly countries in the world, if not the, and they actually import their neighbors' trash. And they burn it at these very high temperatures, and it gets rid of all of the trace elements. And they produce energy at the same time. And it's obviously not Santa Barbara's fault that we're not doing that. It's our state and our federal government who haven't pushed for that technology. Like I said, we're doing what cavemen did. We're burying our trash. This is, this is the highest-tech state in the country. We're supposedly the most technological country in the world. And I think this is, this is really, unfortunately, a disappointment technologically, environmentally, and economically to our residents.
Mr. Friedman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to move the, the staff recommendation along with option three and the 10-year. You know, I don't think any of us want to raise rates, but the reality is, taking care of our trash and our, our wastewater, it, there's costs that are associated with it. And there's costs with doing it environmentally, in an environmentally responsible way, going forward. And that's what we're doing here. The, the Resource Recovery Project, you know, it, it is a ramp up this year, and it's going to affect all of us. However, the alternative is, with that project, if we didn't move forward with it, is that in about seven years, the landfill would be at capacity, and then we would still have, our solid waste would have to go to other communities. Which, when you talk about what other areas are doing, other parts of the world, the least environmentally responsible way to take care of it is for a community that's considered a wealthy community to export their trash to other areas that probably aren't as economically advantageous as we are. And there would be costs for trucking. We wouldn't meet our state mandates. So that's what this project, that's what we're paying for. And it's important that people understand that. It's not a failure. We're getting 85% recyclables, as Ms. Hauser explained. We're getting organic composting out of it, and we're extending the life of the landfill. In addition, once the landfill comes to capacity, and we may have to actually transport our, our solid waste to other communities, these facilities can go another 20 or 30 years to separate out the, the organics, to separate out the recyclables. So the amount of solid waste that we're transporting is a fraction of what it'd be without, without this facility. And so I just want to clarify my colleague's statements earlier. We are getting a lot of environmental benefits out of it, and we're doing a responsible way, and we're taking care of our own solid waste, rather than six years from now, when none of us will be on the council, having a future council decide where we're going to send our trash. So I just want to let the people know, yeah, it's expensive this year, but we are being environmentally responsible. And we have long-term benefits that go even beyond the capacity of the landfill, which is extended. So with that, I will be moving the staff recommendation plus option three.
I'll second your motion, Mr. Friedman, and add a question to you. Where did you stand on the Marburg payment situation?
That was the option.
Oh, okay. I thought you meant, okay. So, okay, so the payment plan. Okay, very good. We have a motion on the floor, Ms. Sneddon, and then Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question. I think it applies probably both to wastewater and to solid waste. But this issue of when a residence is broken up into smaller units, and I've, I've heard this actually from other residents too, and it's now apartment dwellings, sometimes they feel they don't need as many trash receptacles as are required for the number of units, and they're not filling them, and they're not using them, but they're paying for them. And I'm wondering, too, with the wastewater, and I apologize if this had not occurred to me earlier to ask this question until public comment, but what would it do to the rate structure if those units that were previously houses, that were then broken into smaller units, were not held to the strict four-unit, five-unit demarcation, but could be looked at separately?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Sneddon, I'll start with the wastewater. What we've looked at is the very large majority of our multifamily units will be unaffected. So currently, many of these multifamily units are under the cap. The cap right now is 7 HCF. We're lifting the cap. If they're still below that, they won't have any noticeable impact besides the normal rate increases we see. There are a select number, about 4, 3%, that will be impacted above 5%. We've sent letters to all of those individuals to notify them. In wastewater, what we're seeing in some of these places is almost unexplainable type of water use. So we think this is a really good opportunity to talk about conservation, changing out your plumbing fixtures, looking at whether or not you need an irrigation meter. But they are, some of these are, are just an outlier, but we've got many outliers, apparently. And so we really think this is a time to, to initiate that conversation. And so we've, we've done that for everyone that's above the 5%.
Thank you. And then for solid waste, is that an option? I realize it's a policy decision, but does that happen often, that you have questions about that, that weren't, you know, because it's a requirement of a certain number of units, but they may not be filling those receptacles and request for fewer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Sneddon, we actually don't have necessarily that many customers who are, for example, as a converted home into, into a multi-unit. But the, the base requirement is to have trash service. So if they, as a, as, as an entity, needed to reevaluate what that level of service was and whether it was adequate, then we could work with them and do an assessment of their service levels.
Okay, thank you. I will also be supporting the motion, having heard these issues in very careful detail at Water Commission, and I know at, at Finance also, they've been considering these carefully. I mean, these are the true costs of managing our wastewater and managing our waste. And these, we're not making a profit from this. This is what it costs. And to the point, too, with climate change, this is going to cost more as time goes on, as the, as the landfill fills, and as we're dealing with sea level rise. So I really think that this is catching us up to what the actual cost of treating this water and the waste is. And Councilmember Dominguez, I, I can't wait until we can handle our trash the same way as Sweden. I think, actually, they're very inspiring, and I think we're just not there yet at this moment. And I'm grateful that Tahigus is there to separate especially our organics and, and move us in that direction. So I'll be supporting the motion.
Thanks. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad to hear all the adulation for the Swedish culture, not only good-looking people, but very clever as well. And I do agree. I mean, I, I think, I think plasification or that kind of thing is, it produces energy. The technology's fabulous. As usual, we really should be, as Mr. Dominguez said, pushing our regulators to, to advance that, because we shouldn't still be burying our trash. But we, we did get together, I was on that committee for the city, we, when we talked about the Tahigus and the Murph and all the, the things, and all the different environmental impact options that we looked at, and this really was the best available to us at our time. So I'm going to be supportive of it. I would, you know, at one point in time, as I think, our wastewater problems and the impacts on our customers, and one of the big nasty surprises people are getting right now are sewer lateral dings for having, you know, after the drought, a lot of laterals got plugged. At one time, we At one time, we were able to subsidize that. That went away. We can't do it, of course, here, but at some future time, it'd be interesting to have that discussion of what it would take to either build into the rate or to make some kind of program like they have for solar, where you could actually help people finance those things so there wouldn't be a $10,000 surprise they can't, they can't finance. But that's enough for today. Anyway, I will be supportive of the motion.
Thanks. I don't see any other lights. So can I just ask a question? Ms. Hauser's suggestion was perhaps Marborg or other customers could pre-treat their discharge. Is the, we'll be renegotiating the hauling agreement with Marborg in 2023. Is there, is there wastewater part of that? Or they're, they're customers of ours? It's a separate thing?
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So it wouldn't be part of the trash hauling contract? Okay. Well, I, I hear Ms. Hauser, and she's always on a mission, and so we appreciate her being here. So we're going to take, she left, there she is. We'll take a roll call vote unless, okay. And we know what the motion is. It's right there on the screen. And adding that Marborg would get a payment plan on their, what's the expression? Intense, affluent? What do you, what?
High-strength discharges.
High-strength discharge.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor. Can I just ask that you make a determination that there has not been a majority protest submitted for any of the rates proposed or fees?
Would you incorporate that into your motion, Mr. Friedman? And as the second, yes, I approve that, too. Whenever you're ready, Ms. Foreman.
Okay.
Gorman.
Madam Mayor and Council, then the motion is by Mayor Potem Friedman, seconded by Mayor Murillo, to approve the staff recommendation, including a determination that there is not a majority protest against any of the rates proposed, and to include option three to negotiate a payment plan with Marborg for the high-strength discharge implementation options.
That sounds good.
Councilmember Dominguez?
No.
Mayor Potem Friedman?
Yes.
Councilmember Gutierrez?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Rouse?
Hi.
Councilmember Sneddon?
Yes.
And Mayor Murillo?
Aye. So that carries six yeses to one no. And we thank you, Mr. Corn, thank you for helping us and being our consultant, everybody, staff, environmental services, wastewater, public works. Thanks. So we'll close that item and we'll go to Councilmember Committee assignment reports. But we do have a closed session after that. So I've got my list ready. Ms. Sneddon, you go ahead. It looks like you're ready.
Yes, I think I'm ready. The big event I attended was the Santa Barbara Trust for Historic Preservation. They held a three-day conference, Santa Barbara, yesterday, today, and tomorrow. And they had great speakers and architects and really visioning for the bigger picture of architecturally for Santa Barbara, what we might be doing in the future. There was also an additional special CCRB meeting. Again, more of the same negotiations in closed session, which we'll have updates on. That's all.
Okay. Mr. Gutierrez and then Mr. Friedman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I attended the ribbon cutting for the Gutierrez Street Bridge reopening. It was really impressive what, what they did, considering how the previous bridge was and, and all the upgrades they did to it. And I also attended the gang prevention meeting yesterday. And I wasn't there for, for the first half, but the second half was pretty good. We had a speaker from Long Beach talk about how they deal with their gang issues. It was, it was pretty encouraging and inspiring. Thank you.
Mr. Friedman?
I attended the Santa Barbara Beautiful Board Meeting.
I'll add about the gang prevention workshop. It was the South Coast Task Force on Youth Safety, and the focus was on how to gather data. And so we were talking a little bit about the census, and Long Beach has mapped areas of their city. I didn't realize they were 500,000 people, so it's a huge population. They have a lot more area than we do. But they looked at mapping overcrowding, unemployment. So, you know, we're, it was a really good presentation, looking ahead to how we could handle our issues here. The downtown Santa Barbara Board met this morning. Their art and wine festival was a success. They were really happy to receive information that came out of our Cosmont consultant related to downtown. They're doing some scoping. I was at the IBEW, the Electricians Union Apprenticeship Graduation Ceremony this weekend. The Paradise Pit is a place where the people who ride their bicycles from San Francisco to Los Angeles to raise money for AIDS research, it's the AIDS lifecycle event. That was very uplifting and amazing that people ride their bikes from San Francisco to Los Angeles. I don't know about you, that sounds pretty crazy to me. The mayors had a meeting in Solvang, countywide mayors. And then I went to recycling, our recycled water training at El Estero. So our customers have to take a, a training annually, and it was nice. You know, Mr. Casey, I like to keep an eye on our public works, and they do such a good job down there at El Estero. And then first Thursday, I had an art reception in my office, where hung some art by the Abstract Art Collective, and it was beautiful. And then Councilmember Gutierrez and I were also at a memorial service for Etalvinum Menchaca. Will be an Eastside resident and on the board of the Mariachi Festival and a real champion of children and families and educational access. And will be adjourning our meeting in her memory. But first, we will go to Ms. Clerk, reading us our, our closed session item, please.
Item 15, Conference with Labor Negotiator, as described in Agenda Item 15.
And we won't be reporting out, so I'll adjourn this meeting to closed session in honor of Etalvinum Menchaca. honor of Etalvinum Menchaca.